I'd like to call this meeting to order in accordance with Governor Baker's order to suspend certain provisions of the open meeting law. It will be held remotely in an online conference mode hosted on zoom.com. Members of the public will not be able to attend. The meeting will be broadcasted live on cable on Comcast Cable Channel 12. And also viewed on live stream WHCA TV. It will subsequently be broadcasted on youtube.com. We're in open session now. I'm going to stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic. And as customary, I'd like to call a moment of silence and you can bring a moment of silence. If you can think of the veterans who gave gave their life for our freedom and also if you have members of your family that are veterans, if you would like to thank them tomorrow. It would be appreciative. Thank you very much. I'd like to announce this meeting is being broadcasted and recorded and televised by a local cable company. I need a motion to approve bill and payroll warrants. Do I hear a motion?
Don't move, Brian.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? You have a couple of votes? Brian?
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Randy Almatina?
Yes.
And Justin Evans?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. I'll need a motion to approve bill and payroll warrants. Do I hear a motion? I already did. I need a motion to accept correspondence in the refile.
Don't move.
There is second.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, roll call. Brian?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Uh, approval of meeting minutes, open session. Twenty twenty twenty.
Don't move, Brian.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Brian?
I believe that's the one I missed, so I would abstain.
Okay. Randy?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Yes.
And I will. Meeting, I need a motion for open session meetings for October 28th, 2020. Do I hear a motion?
Don't move, Brian.
Exactly. Any discussion? Hearing none, Brian?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. And finally, me, a motion to accept open meeting of October 29th, 2020. Do I hear a motion?
Don't move, Brian.
Second?
Second.
Hearing none, Brian?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay, now being, uh, is, uh, we have Bruce with us? Bruce with us yet?
Yes, please.
Yes, I am.
Okay, beautiful. We have, um, I'd like a motion to, uh, we're going to schedule a joint hearing with the, uh, commissioners. So there's a joint meeting with the Department of Public Works to, on the purpose of interviewing and following following candidates for interim appointment and fulfill one vacancy, Mark Coria and Anthony Marcharel. Do I, um, I think at this point, Kevin, I believe you have to open up your, your board, ask for a motion, open up your board to our joint meeting.
Yes.
Go to your, in your book.
Though, I'm not sure the official way to do this, but, uh, meeting with DPW, our public works. The joint session with the Board of Selectmen. Do I have a motion to open the meeting? Second? And Wayne?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And I am yes.
Thank you. Um, well, apparently, um, I guess the ball is in your court. You want to introduce the, um, the two people that would like to, uh, us to vote on. And I would probably like maybe your thoughts on how you feel before we go around both boards and if there aren't. So, I mean, would you like to introduce or talk about the two applicants?
Do you understand, I'll defer to them. I'd like the candidates, one at a time.
Sure.
To, you know, explain their reasoning, why they'd like to join the board and what they can bring to the board. And, um, you'll let, let them talk.
Okay. Uh, who's up first, Mark?
Sure, I mean, I'll go first. Obviously, uh, the name on the screen is not my daughter Savannah, Mark Coria. Uh, I've been living in, I've lived in this town my whole life. I think a few of you guys may know who I am. I also have been around the construction industry my whole life. My father had a trucking company. Uh, I've been, uh, as a child digging off tracks on loaders and, uh, been around that type of industry pretty much my whole life. So, um, really thought about doing some volunteering. Life is volunteers all the time. He's a third generation Whitman. So, you know, I thought it was maybe time for me to throw my name in the hat and, uh, this is kind of a nice little, um, you know, a year, a year and a half, uh, try. And, uh, if I'd like it or get it, um, maybe continue it with it, you know? I think, uh, with it comes to the construction industry, I also have a good mechanical background. So, um, I think I'm well versed in a lot of DPW's workings. And I drive around town all the time and I pretty much know what's going around, going on in town. Because that's what I do. I pay attention to what's going on. So that's what I have to say. And, um, you know, hopefully consider me. And I do know Tony, he used to be our, uh, we used to commute together. Tony, hello?
Hello, Mark, how are you?
Back in the nineties, early nineties, me and Tony used to commute together to, uh, the Sheriff's Department. We were both corrections officers together.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have questions, uh, for Mark? On both either board? Anyone?
Mark, one question, would, would you run again? So if you get appointed tonight, would you run for reelection when it, when it came up?
I plan on it. I mean, I'm not going in this, uh, willy nilly. I've given it some thought. So I plan on it. And if you guys like me and, you know, I like what's going on, obviously I care about what's going on here in Whitman. I've been in Whitman my whole life. So, uh, obviously I'd like to see, uh, um, everything, uh, obviously the roads. I like to see, obviously love to see the DPW get new building. You know, obviously we've talked about it for a long time. So, yeah, I think I'd like to be a part of it, you know? So.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Um, okay, that being said, Anthony, would you like to present yourself and, uh, talk, you know, tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure, sure. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you folks tonight. I've resided in town for 39 years. I live at 340 Coach Road. I'm a graduate of Suffolk University in Business Administration. I'm a retired correctional officer from the Plymouth County House of Correction. Uh, I also was on civil offense for the town of Whitman for 16, 15 years, uh, on the Whitman Police Department as, uh, an auxiliary, uh, special police officer with the rank of sergeant. They awarded ranks in those days. And, uh, I was, uh, in 2010, I was elected to the Plymouth County Charter Commission. My purpose for applying is that I'm a long time resident of the town. I know, uh, I like to see the town progress and, uh, take care of its residents, which it has been. And, uh, I think in these troubled economic times, uh, I think my management background, uh, education, would, uh, help, um, analyze some of the decisions that the town has to make. We're in trying times economically and socially. And, uh, I would like to, uh, come back into the town. Spent many years, uh, in town and in county government as a volunteer, uh, as you can see from my, uh, my resume there, if you folks have it in front of you. So I have a vested interest in the town and, uh, my grandchildren go to town, uh, school in the town. So, um, that's where I'm at and I want to see good things continue for the town.
Thank you very much, Tony. Does anybody have questions, uh, to Tony?
Uh, same question I have for Tony. Just, uh, would you run? So if you're appointed tonight, would, would you run in the election when the seat came up again?
Yes, sir. I, I would consider that very heavily. Like I said, um, if the town is happy with me, um, and it's a, you know, new agreement, I, I would pursue that avenue, for the best interest of all.
Okay. And I got a, I got a second question that I'd like to ask Mark the same question. What do you see as the number one issue in the Department of Public Works?
I really, obviously another building has been a, a, you know, that those guys need to get off their backs off that floor and that garage. That's been a long time coming. I like to see that happen. And obviously I know there's some big projects coming up. I know Obby Street is going to be a, I mean, that's a, that's been a mess for so long. You know, and you can, you gotta do what you can with the money you have. So obviously it's all up to the town and, um, with, when it comes to the money. So I know it's tight everywhere. So you can do what we can and, um, make smart choices.
That it?
Anthony, uh, if I could ask the same question, what do you think the number one issue was for the department?
Uh, yeah, well, I'd like to see the department have the best, uh, equipment and, uh, keep the boys, uh, on the job as well as possible. Obviously, uh, everything is financial concern, but whatever the town is allowed to give them and, uh, the facilities and everything to maintain the town of Whitman as well as, uh, the safety of its residents, as well as the safety of the men on the department. So, uh, the department, uh, should be well taken care of to serve the, to serve the people of the town.
That it? Does anybody else have any questions of either one, either applicant? I tell you, it sounds like we have two men, uh, really good candidates for this position. It's going to be a hard decision to make. I guess, uh, I don't know, Kevin, does your board have any, uh, any preference? Or you just want us to go around your board and then we go around my board on which one we want to, uh, vote for?
Yeah, I think it's just a combined vote between the two boards. So I think if there's no other questions and all set question wise.
Okay. Would your board like to, uh, cast its votes for whichever? And then we'll go after you.
Yep. Uh, so I, uh, I'll start with myself. I would want to, Mark? Wayne?
I'll go with Mark Coria also.
Ken?
I'm going to abstain at this time.
Really?
Dave?
Uh, I'm voting for Mark as well.
For who? Mark?
Mark, Mr. Coria.
Okay. Okay, our board, uh, go around Brian.
Top choice, both of you guys, uh, seem like they have great ideas and, um, would be, um, definitely, uh, heads up to, uh, good things at the DPW. But I guess I'll go with Mark.
Uh, Kyle?
Uh, I, I vote for Mark also.
Uh, I would vote for Mr. Coria.
Justin?
Uh, I'll also vote for Mark, but I'd like to, uh, let Tony know there are plenty of other volunteer opportunities. It sounds like the numbers are, uh, not working in his favor right now.
Right. And for myself, since I know both, both applicants, uh, personally, I'd like the same, uh, as, I'd like to abstain myself because I'm, I'm friends with both of them and I think it would be improper. But, um, so it looks like, um, Mark Coria is our decision. So, um, I guess, Mark, you have to contact the clerk's office and get sworn in.
Okay.
All right. And congratulations. And I'd like to thank Tony for, you know, stepping forward. And, and like Justin says, there's other areas of opportunity that you may want to, uh, volunteer for. And you may want to run for, uh, DPW Commissioner, uh, next year. Cause there may be, you know, you never know, another position may open up.
Mr. Chairman, could I have the floor for a minute? This is, uh, this is Wayne Carroll.
Yeah, Wayne.
I just want to let you know that, um, this will be my last term. It will end in May and I'll be stepping down. So I will not be running again, uh, for the DPW Commission. So I just wanted, uh, Tony to know that. So if he's interested in, in running, then I won't put my papers in. I'll be moving probably at the end of the year, 2021. So I just, uh, I won't put my papers in for another term if I know that somebody is interested in running for the position.
Do you hear that, Tony?
Yes, I appreciate the, uh, the information very much. And I appreciate the opportunity that at least you attended me. And, uh, it was an honor to come before the two groups and, uh, present myself. And, uh, I wish Mark a lot of luck in his new endeavors. And, uh, we happen to be good friends anyway. So we'll see each other around the campus, so to speak.
Okay. And I expect to be signing your papers when you take them out to run for Commissioner. When Wayne is done. Okay.
Time will tell, gentlemen, time will tell.
Okay. Can you down to the town hall, Tony, together?
All right, thank you.
Dan, if I could just, Mark, we are meeting, our meeting is Tuesday. So, so if you can get sworn in for them, so you can attend the meeting next week.
I'm sure I can swing by the town hall. I appreciate it. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it. And I, I'm sure I, I don't, I don't, I don't plan on disappointing anybody.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Thank you for stepping forward.
Congratulations, Mark Reddick.
Thank you.
All right, that being said, while we still have a, in a joint meeting, Lisa would like to, uh, on a town administrator's reporting, would like to discuss a couple of issues, uh, with, uh, the DPW's presence. It's traffic light outage at Route 14 and 18 and the, uh, issue of discussing about the special town meeting. So, uh, Lisa?
Yes.
You're on.
Okay, um, Mr. Chairman.
Kyle, true? Tony, yes, you are.
Okay, thank you for the, have a good evening, folks.
Thank you.
Bye bye, Tony.
Oh, great.
Okay, uh, Mr. Mr. Chair, I'd like to, um, as you noted, um, go a little bit out of, um, you know, make a couple of changes. I just want to skip over COVID for right now and bring to the, um, the forefront, the traffic light outages, um, issues at Route 14 and 18. I have, um, the DPW Commission with us and Bruce Martin that can talk to the board a little bit about the issue that they're having with the power outages and the, uh, traffic lights in that, uh, intersection. So Bruce and, and DPW Commission, I'll turn that over to you.
Okay, this is Bruce. So we do have some issues with the intersection, specifically at 18 and 14 with, um, frequent power outages. And on occasions, those outages last for a long period of time. The last one, the last outage, I believe, was approximately 12 hours. And, um, we called the state DOT. There we go. We called the state DOT to get some help. And, uh, in the middle of the night and they, they could often none. And, um, so what we did as an administrative, uh, method was we just bring up four traffic barrels with stop signs on them. And we put a light tower and the wind icon on it and shining onto the middle of, uh, intersection. Very unsafe. High speeds, uh, going north and southbound on Route 18. It's, it's just not a good situation. So the very next day, we reached out to the state DOT engineer that's work, currently working on a project up there at 18 and 27, 18 and 14. And asked him if there was any way that there could be some kind of battery backup so those lights would automatically go into a flashing red, uh, four way startup, uh, during a power outage. Uh, even if the local DPW, uh, had to go up there and plug in a generator or whatever it took. We were told that there wasn't anything, uh, currently like that in service in the state. And, uh, that was pretty much, uh, the end of it. And we continue to, uh, we plan on continuing doing what we have to do to make it as safe as possible during these, uh, frequent power outages up there. Bearing in mind that it is a state-run and state-maintained intersection. So it's not a Whitman DPW maintained or controlled intersection. But if there's our town and what we, if nobody's going to respond from the state, we do the best we can during these issues. So I think what we're looking for was at least something maybe jointly from the Board of Selectmen and the, uh, and the Public Works Commissioners in the form of a letter to the state DOT of District Five, requesting some kind of, uh, you know, backup system at that intersection. And, you know, see what their response is official.
So, uh, Bruce, that sounds like a plan. We could probably put a joint letter together. And I will probably bring it up. I'll bring that issue up at my next MPO meeting or JTC meeting because using MassStart is there. And at least they'll jot it down and they'll bring it forward. But if we get a letter from the town, a request, it's, uh, it's a lot firmer that they'll pay more attention. So maybe, um, either at least we can put together a joint letter and both the Commissioners can sign it and the Board of Selectmen can sign it and we'll see what happens. I don't know if there is a process where they could put up batteries there. I, I don't know. So, I mean, that's something that, uh, they would have to let us know if that's possible.
Yeah, Dan, I, I did some research and you can do battery backup. You can even do solar. They don't last very long, obviously. Um, you know, no one can really tell me how long they would last, even in the flash mode. But you can do a battery backup to the system. You, you know, you can do a plugin for a generator. I'd prefer some type of battery backup just because with a generator, well, now we still need to dispatch a crew and maintain a generator and, um, so some type of battery backup system, I think, would be.
Right. And a battery backup system would last how long? That's the thing.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't think, without knowing the intersection that, you know, MassStart tells that, you know?
Okay. Well, we're still drafting a letter would be seen, uh, appropriate. Uh, Lisa, and you, uh, want to talk about town meeting, the special town meeting?
Yes, so, um, again, this, this pertains, again, this is with the DPW. This is in regards to the Force Main Project. Uh, the DPW Commission has, uh, requested a special town meeting to, um, receive authorization for, um, borrowing, I believe. The specifics as far as the actual total amount, um, and the impact it will have on the water rates is, is still, um, in the workings. However, um, I, um, quite a wrinkle, um, came in this, this evening. We were talking about, um, possibly for a special town meeting. As you know, eh, our quorum is 150 voters, registered voters. And due to COVID, um, we would follow, like to follow what other towns have done, which is lower the quorum. Hanson just had their special town meeting. Uh, they had it on Saturday morning at the high school and they lowered their quorum to 25 voters. They got 25 folks, um, and got their business done and taken care of. However, the wrinkle in that is we were hoping maybe to, to pull something together to have this, um, in December. However, under the new, um, town meeting laws that, uh, is part of Chapter 92 of the Act of 2020, specifically, uh, referred to with COVID. In order to consider adjusting the town meeting, special town meeting quorum, what needs to happen is that the selectmen need to publish seven days before the vote or the discussion in or discussion takes place, um, of adjusting the quorum. And the, um, they need to provide a means for public access to allow interested members of the public to clearly follow the deliberations of the selectmen in making a quorum adjustment, as, as the deliberations occur. And then the second part of that is, um, once a vote is taken, if the quorum is to be lowered, the town clerk must notify the Attorney General of the adjusted quorum, um, vote. And, um, the Attorney General has to approve that. So at this point, you know, given the timeframes that we're looking at, we're probably pushing this out into January, for a special town meeting for the purpose of the DPW, um, borrowing authorization for the Force Main Project.
Would that work for the DPW?
I, my only question, I don't know how that, so the whole reasoning behind, one of the reasons, obviously, we got to get this project moving. But we also need town meeting approval, uh, for SRF funding. And before we can get that funding, we need town meeting approval. So I don't know how that affects it if we wait till January. I don't know, Lisa, if you have any input on that or, or if that would still work in that timeframe. I heard, um, February, March timeframe, they, they make the recommendations.
You know, it's difficult to say. I mean, if we want to move forward with our, our quota for special town meetable of 150 voters, we'll have to work very hard, uh, to get that many voters into town hall in, uh, December.
Yeah.
You know, we really don't have any other choice. That is what that, the law says that we must do. We must follow that process, um, if we are to entertain lowering the quorum. So it, it's, you know, it's, it's a call of the board, discussion, decision of the board at this point. Which, whichever they, um, choose to go, I will make it happen.
Does anybody have any thoughts on this? Uh, Justin?
Uh, where the governor just lowered the, uh, COVID restrictions on the number of people you want in a room. I don't think we should move forward with 150 people, um, for a town, for a special town meeting. So I, I don't think there's much more to discuss than that.
Right. Exactly. And it's still, um, it's, it's still a, um, question. We don't know if the governor's new directive with only 10 people within a, you know, within a space includes the, the, uh, town meetings. So we would need our, um, town council to give us an opinion on that if, whether we could go. Cause if we go with the lowest amount for reduction in our quorum, we can go not less than 10%, which would give us 15 voters, 15 people.
Not a lot. Anybody else have any thoughts? Randy, yes.
And I think we're just, uh, kind of echo what Justin said. I think when we were looking at how we could, how many we could comfortably, uh, with social distancing, get into the auditorium. I think it was only 92 people. So even at proper social distancing rate, uh, you know, 150 is going to be a, uh, a, a task.
Right.
We'd have to, we'd have to look at the high school for, for something like that. But again, we would have to see if the governor's new directive includes, uh, these municipal town meetings.
Right, because it has to be in town, it has to be in the town, right?
Well, with the legislation that came out, it does allow a town to hold a town meeting in another, in another geographic area if we cannot do so safely within our own town. So that's how, that's how we were able to hold the, um, annual town meeting in July at the high school.
Right. So if that's the case, if we want to lower it to say 25 or 30, we can hold it at the, uh, high school's gym.
Yes, we could.
Seems like a plan. Anybody else have any thoughts on that and how many we should allow?
I guess I, I would agree. I mean, get, we're not going to get 150 people and, or we should, we shouldn't get 150 people together.
But I think 15 is not enough.
No, I mean, maybe 20, 25 is the number. I don't know what the number is. I, I guess from the DPW side, um, I guess the importance of how I, I guess from the DPW side, um, I guess the importance of having this town meeting. And in a smaller format, so we can get the funding. Um, I mean, this is a, a seventeen to twenty million dollar project that um is, is long overdue. And, and it's a tipping, it's a ticking time bomb down there with that force main. And, and we can't, y- you know, the, the goal is to get the funding and get it bid and get it going in next construction season. And, and that's, that's what we need to do. So um, a- any, any help we can get, you know, from, from Lisa herself and the selectmen and the board. Um, to come up with a number that we can safely get some people together that um. We can then take the next step and get our funding set up for this.
Yeah, Lisa, how did Hanson get, how many did Hanson lower to?
So um Hanson lowered their quorum to twenty-five and they had their, their, um, they had their special town meeting. Um, at the high school, actually in the cafeteria um on a Saturday morning.
Did they get more than twenty-five?
Uh, I, I don't know if they got more than twenty-five. I know that they got their twenty-five and they were able to complete their business. However, I just um caution the board to have any more deliberation on this. This is just kind of a, a quick discussion because we do have to put out that seven day, publish that seven day notice. Um, that we will be having the discussion in new business um at the, at the next selectmen meeting. Uh, we can get that published right away. Um, with, let's see, so I can send it in to the express on Tuesday. So it would be in uh November nineteenth. Um, it will be in that publication uh for the next selectmen meeting that we have. Um, and then we have to figure out a mechanism to let, you know, to let the, the, the public um have the opportunity to follow the deliberations on that. So we'll have to work with the cable studio to, to find a mechanism for that.
All right, so your recommendation is that you need a motion tonight on an amount of people that we would consider?
No, we don't need to do anything, no motions or anything. This is just um the town administrator report, just to let you know where we stand with the process and the timeline. Um, and then on our, like I said, we'll move forward with the publication of the notice to the voters. That this is going to be on the discussion, this will be on the agenda for the next board of selectmen meeting. Um, after we're able to publish the notice, notice for seven days.
And that's, in that meeting, we'll discuss uh the amount of people we'd like to lower to?
Yes, yes, exactly.
So I guess I'm asking our board to kind of consider it and think about it and how many they think is the proper amount. Uh, I personally think that, that twenty-five is not enough, but that's my opinion. Um, we're a little bit bigger than Hanson, but whether or not you're going to get any more than twenty-five, I don't know. So we'll just have to think about it, think on what the issue is. And if we can get, you know, thirty people or thirty-five, whatever, you know, we'll have to think about it.
And in the meantime, too, I will look into more um whether the governor's new directives impact um spe- the town meetings, special town meetings. I will look into that.
Lisa, just to, so just so I understand the process. So you have to make a notification that the selectmen are going to meet and discuss lowering the number at town meeting. So that will, that's the first step.
Yes.
At, at, at that meeting, the next selectmen meeting.
Mm-hmm.
If a number is agreed upon, could a date be set at that same meeting? Or then would there be another, there'd have to be another selectmen's meeting to set a date for the special town meeting?
I will need to check into that because once the selectmen vote on a number. Um, then the town clerk, um, not less than ten days after the vote, the town clerk must um. Submit the adjustment in the quorum to the attorney general's office. So I will need to look into the answer to that question because it's unclear whether we have to have. Um, the attorney general approval before we can actually schedule the meeting. So I need to look into that because that is not specified um in that area of the law.
Okay.
So I'll get, I'll back, I'll get back to you on that.
Okay. Okay, uh Kevin, I guess you need to motion your board to adjourn uh and we'll continue on with our open meeting?
Yes.
If you have any other concerns?
I'm outside on my end if, if the selectmen are.
All right, you need a motion to adjourn your meeting with us and we'll continue.
Yes, look for a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, we have a motion from Wayne. Seconded by Dave, all in favor. Wayne?
Hi.
Ken?
Yes.
Dave?
Hi.
And I'm a yes.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Okay, we're, right now, we're still in our open session and we'll continue with the town administrators' report. Uh, the next is what, COVID nineteen update?
Okay, yes, um, so COVID update numbers.
No, you can leave.
Yeah, that's.
They wait till they leave?
Okay, there we go.
There you go.
Um, okay, so as of today, we have fifteen new positive cases in the town. Last week, we had thirty-nine positive cases. Um, we are still designated as high risk, still in the red. And interestingly enough, I attended a meeting today um with Brockton Mayor Sullivan. And some of our um neighbors. And basically Brockton um is looking at, basically, today, they had four hundred and sixty-three new cases, positive cases. Um, they've had a total of five thousand six hundred and fifteen uh positive cases and three hundred and six deaths. So right now, the virus is running rampant in Brockton. Um, they did go into um talking about the age groups that are right now. Um, the positive tests are ranging from the twenty to forty year old age groups. Um, the positive tests. And as far as the deaths, the deaths are, are specified between from seventy-six. And i- into the ninety range as far as the deaths. So um, they basically, they're contributing the cases um in the younger age group to. Uh, the parties that are being, that are going on right now. Um, they said people are just not taking this seriously. Um, the officials are very frustrated that they just, they can't get people to wear the masks. They can't get them to social distance. Um, and the parties that they're go- that are going on, they said the, the mayor's office gets calls constantly. Um, with reports of parties and fireworks going on in Brockton. So um, i- it's a, it's very difficult on how they're going to control that. Um, but fortunately, it doesn't seem to be spilling over into Whitman. Uh, because our numbers are still low, but we're still considered red for right now. Um, we are doing something right because our numbers are not skyrocketing as Brockton is.
That, that, that's a positive thing.
Yep.
Next on the agenda is the, uh, the veteran agent?
Okay, um, so veteran agent. Um, I conducted a survey, which I sent to everybody on an Excel spreadsheet. Um, of some of the um salaries and hours for some of our surrounding towns and neighbors. And as you can see from the spreadsheet, there's really no average, there's no standard. Salaries and hours are all over the place. Um, some towns are uh part-time, some are full-time, some towns have clerical, some don't. So um, what I did was I sat with our town accountant. And um, we came up with a salary that we think is, is reasonable. Um, our VSO will not have clerical help, so they'll be doing everything on their own. So we came up with a salary of fifty-five thousand, which is about thirty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. Uh, for twenty-eight hours uh per week. And you know, based on what other towns are paying, uh, that seems to be a very reasonable figure. Tom McCarthy thought that that was a very reasonable salary that we would be able to um. Have some very qualified um candidates apply for um, based on working with the smaller town and. Um, as soon as I get the, either blessing or recommendations or directives from the board. I can go ahead and get that um posted. Um, right now, we have Chris Buckley, who is the East Bridgewater Veterans Agent. He is um in town hall on Mondays from one to four. So he is um servicing any veterans who require services. And he's also working on the recertifications that are due in December. So he's doing us a, a very big help with um doing those recertifications. And he has no problem with um putting in the time necessary to get those in. Um, of course, we have him as a volunteer through the month of November, but then come December. Um, we may, we'll need to look into compensating him for the time he is putting in Whitman. Because he is helping us out with all of that, um, and making sure none of our veterans lose any of their benefits.
Good, uh, yes, Brian?
A couple of questions for Lisa. Um, uh, do you know, uh, at what point the determination was twenty-eight hours was sufficient to do that job? Uh, I know that um, my guess is she probably was doing way above that before in uh, for, in the free department. Um, but um, I, you know, I just thought, you know, when we said that we were thinking about use, using a uh. A person to go full-time on this, I envisioned more than twenty-eight hours.
Well, you, you know, we, we had looked into that and then when I looked at what other towns were paying for somebody that was working over thirty hours.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the salaries were much higher. Um, Abington, for instance, at thirty-five hours was paying sixty-eight thousand. Um, then we had Rockland, uh, I think, which was around seventy or Hingham around seventy. So anything that seemed to go above thirty hours, the salaries jumped quite a bit. Um, and you, you know, with, with being fiscally reasonable, um, responsible. Um, twenty-eight hours basically seems to cover the, like, the eight to um four range or nine to five. And then on a Tuesday, they could adjust the hours if more veterans needed to come in it later in the day. So that gave them the flexibility in that aspect. Um, but just, you know, just by what we saw out there and then talking with Tom and Chris. Um, if you keep the hours under thirty hours, um, that seems to be able to um provide the veterans with the service. And then, and yet not break or, you know, put us, our, our budget for that department. Um, you know, be questionable.
Yeah, my uh, my thinking was not necessarily what, what it's costing, excuse me, what it's costing us. But what um, the time required to make sure that our veterans are taken care of in a proper manner. And I, so that's more of the question why I always questioned the twenty-eight hours. And um, I just wanted to uh briefly let everybody know that um Tom McCarthy was uh. Honored a muddy night at the Abington Board of Selectmen meeting uh and uh. Senator Brady was there and um Congressman Lynch. And so he had a nice send-off on, on the Abington side. So I just wanted to uh, once again, um, honor him uh for his service to Whitman. Uh, I was uh fortunate to um read the proclamation at his uh coffee hour last week, I believe it was. And um, we had a nice group there and it was nice. And uh, I could tell that he really appreciated it, he got a little choked up about it. But uh, we all want to thank him for what he's done for the town and the veterans here. And uh, and going forward, we wish him and his family the best.
Has anybody else have any thoughts on this issue? Saying nine, um, is the board comfortable with the twenty-eight hours at fifty-five thousand dollars a year? No, right, is anybody like to make a motion on that?
I'll make that motion, Brian.
I will second that, Dan, right it.
Thank you very much, any further discussion? All right, all in favor, uh, Randy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Hal?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, so there you go, Lisa, you got your marching order, see if you can come up and see, come up with somebody.
Excellent, excellent.
There's an update on the strategic plan.
Okay, strategic plan, so um. I had reached out to um the NOVAC Consulting Group. Uh, they actually completed, or they're working with um Westboro on the strategic plan. And then Frank was also um, had reached out to some folks and he sent me the information that he got. Um, and I've had some phone conversations with Ann Donner Consulting. Um, basically, strategic plans can go in many different um avenues, can, can cover many different roads. And basically by the, you know, to the proposal that I got from NOVAC. And then the firm information I got from the Donna Consulting. Um, I really didn't have a direction from the board of what areas that they, you know, the wish was to cover in the strategic plan. Um, just to give you an idea, Westboro, their strategic plan with um basically covering workforce economics. Um, transportation, um, and they have a lot, they had a lot of different on there. But their strategic plan was costing them in the realm of seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, you know, we had a budget of fifteen for ours. So um, NOVAC Group um put together a proposal that would, um, they would do some workshops with us and, and ask some questions and gather some data. And then put that information um into a report that we could look at. But it's not really a strategic plan, so to speak. It's, it's just kind of their da- their data gathering. Um, and then giving us something that shows what data they gathered, but it's not a strategic plan. Um, if the board would like to give me kind of an, some areas to focus on. Um, I may be able to narrow it down and then see what our budget will, will get us. Um, again, you know, it's workforce, um, economics, transportation, infrastructure planning. Um, you know, economic development, any, any of those areas that we want to focus in on. Um, you know, then I can get a better idea and then, and then really get some um proposals in for work that they can do.
Anybody have any?
Yeah. Um, I'll, I'll speak on it, Mr. Chairman. Um, yeah, that, that is uh kind of disheartening to hear. Um, that we, we are uh, um, by, by that much. Um, because I, I, my goal was to, can I, and put together what we've uh. You know, uh, determined through the survey we did. Uh, I absolutely think it needs to be uh economic. But I think when you say that, it, it brings in uh workforces and, and. Uh, capital and the minute you say economics, to me, that, that's like an, you know, going to be an all encompassing term of. You know, i- if this is a roadmap where we are now to where we plan on being five years ago. I think it needs to be uh, definitely uh, you know, take as much ground as we can and come be all encompassing. And, and that's my opinion and I don't know if maybe uh. You know, we, we somehow. Either, I mean, I, I would hate, I would hate to put this off because uh, I think we've come too far and. But I, I want to say something right, I, I think it's pretty important for where, where we're going to end up going, so.
Okay, uh, yeah, Justin, please.
Uh, yeah, I was just going to add to that, where we've already done the community survey, the capital plan, the Madden Report. And uh, we've got a, a yet unapproved housing production plan um sitting around. I feel like a lot of the groundwork is already done. Um, this might be worth looking at what other town strategic plans include. And seeing what we can piecemeal with what we have and maybe find someone to fill in the gaps.
Sure, absolutely, yep.
Makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, Hal, you have any, any thoughts on it?
Yeah, I like, I like what Justin just said, of all, I've always had the. I've always had, I've always had.
You're breaking up.
Is that, is that, am I doing that?
Yes.
Actually, Brian, can you mute yourself? I think it's uh feedback.
Okay.
Yeah, um, I've always felt that, that we had, we basically had the strategic plan written, except it wasn't written. We had elements of it and Randy just ticked them off and Justin referred to them too. Uh, I don't think it's a fifteen thousand dollar job, to tell you the truth, to sit and talk with uh. And see some of the documents of Randy's committee, just to uh, to look again at that survey. And to uh, maybe sit, maybe sit down in small groups of people. Um, in the town hall, whenever we can do that again. And uh, come up with some goals and objectives.
Yeah.
Goals, that's what a strategic plan is, goals and objectives. Uh, what do you, you have some, you have some goals and you, uh, how do you get there? How you, how do you reach it? How do you do it? It's, it's not, it's not a um. Doesn't have to, doesn't have to be seventy-five pages long or seventy-five thousand dollars uh worth of money. Um, but we, but somebody has, somebody has to do the work. Somebody actually has to sit down with a, with a uh. Somebody actually has to sit down with, with a, with a, with a computer and, and write something. But we have, but as Justin said and as Randy reminded us, we, we, we have it basically done.
Yeah.
Have it basically done. So I
Just have to put it in.
Somebody has to do it, yeah.
Ryan, you have any thoughts on it?
Well, I, I think all, all three selectmen made great points. And I just think if we don't do this, I mean, we've, we'll put this off. We, we kind of dropped the ball. I mean, we're, we're kind of at the goal line. I mean, with all these other things that we've put together and, and stressed out about and, and, you know, this would be the icing on the cake, I think, if we could just put this all together. Now, if that means hiring somebody to be the quarterback for all that information, that might be a good idea. Somebody that's professional in that kind of work. But I think Kyle's right, we have a lot of that information already. We just need to put it in place and pretty it up, shine it up, and then I think we could just implement it.
Right. Lisa, is that something?
Well, let's, right. Let's not say pretty it up, Brian.
We, we need to.
We have to put some, we have to put some polish. Yeah, we have to put some shine on it. That's right, a little, little polish, but we're not, we're not printing, we're not printing it. We're not covering things over.
Right, right.
You know, I, I think
Put it in a nice package.
If you look at what Randy's committee, yeah, if you look at what Randy did, Randy's committee did last year, they have, they have some goals. They have, they have, they have a direction that they're looking at. Kind of put, just kind of put that down in writing and, and it will be done. We found out by that survey what our, what our citizens want, what they would like us to do. They would like us basically to have a really great school system and, and terrific roads and
Low taxes.
Effective, effective policemen and great firemen and, and not costing any money.
Right.
Alright, so, I guess, Lisa, is that something you can work on?
Yes.
Okay, good.
I, yeah. Have a direction now and I, I can work with these two firms and see who's gonna, who can give us the, the best bang for our buck, basically.
Okay.
Now I know it, we're in a direction to go to, so.
Make sure you tell them we want to shine it up.
Yeah. Yeah, Justin.
I would just add to, we brought up economic development. Something that, that we can start thinking about in economic development studies. The town at the election passed the Community Preservation Act. I have seen other towns use the housing portion of the money for economic development studies, because it usually comes with increased housing. So that would be a fiscal twenty-three thought, but to get way ahead of ourselves. But it's something that we can put in the long view.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds like a plan.
I'll see what we can do.
Alright, next on the agenda on the new business is act on the appointment of Fred Swall as a member of the building facility and capital expenditure committee for a three-year term through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one in order to fill a vacancy, an existing vacancy. Do I hear a motion?
So move, Brian.
Any discussion?
It seems
Wait a minute, hold on.
Somebody else, somebody else.
Fred's been, been sitting in on the meetings for so long.
I know that.
Seems like a natural ad.
Anyways, any discussion on this? None? Alright. Kyle?
Have we, have we moved it? Have we moved it?
Yeah.
And seconded, okay. I'll, I'll vote, uh, yeah, I guess I'll vote yes.
Yeah, yeah, pretty it up. Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Brian?
Hmm, yes.
And I'll vote yes. So now, so now Fred's officially on the board. Next on the agenda, Whitman will.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely, Fred.
Thank you, Fred.
Whit- Whit- Whitman will MOU. Lisa?
Okay, so Whitman Will is applying for a grant. And basically, they just need the municipality of Whitman just to sign off with the municipal representative, being myself. And then this is also in conjunction with Brockton. And so Mayor Sullivan would sign off on this as well, just giving our support to the Whitman Will for applying for this grant and giving them any support we can, once they receive the grant. So it's just a matter of signing the MOU and then letting them know we support them.
Do we need a motion to this effect?
Um, yes, just to
We probably could do it.
Right. Do I hear a motion that we will support the Whitman Will MOU?
Yeah, I'll, I'll move that.
Second, Brian.
Any further discussion? Kyle?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Alright, Lisa, I'll be in tomorrow. I know the Town Hall is closed, but I'll sign it tomorrow.
Okay.
Alright. Uh, appointment of the, let's see, appointment to the Plymouth County Water District Committee in order to fill an existing vacancy. We need a member of the board to step forward and fill that position. Any member interested?
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't know, does it have to be a member of the board's selectman?
It does not. It, it could be a representative designated by the board.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I didn't think.
Are you stepping forward, Justin?
So I, I mean, I, I'm a public utilities engineer. It's not necessarily out of my, my area.
Because I know that our past selectman was on it and, of course, he's now the town administrator for Abington, so he can't be on it. So I mean, where you, it's in your background, would you be interested in stepping forward and volunteering?
I, sure.
Okay, do I hear a motion to that effect?
Motion, Brian, quickly.
I will say, can we appoint him tonight? I, I will second it. Do we?
I don't know. And then, do you have to open it up to the public or something? I, I don't know.
It, it's a selectman position, right? So we're really just assigning him to it.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, alright, alright, yeah.
Alright. Okay. So you are yes? Alright, who has voted for it so far?
I think it's
Yes.
Alright, I'll vote yes.
Yes.
Quickly, before he changes his mind.
I know.
Jaws now.
Very good. Congratulations.
Okay, I guess that, I guess that ends our public session.
Actually, there's a
Anything else?
Request of the Board of Assessors. Dan?
Yes.
I have, I have on it, there's an act on the request of the Board of, of the Board of Assessors.
Oh, yeah.
Right, right, yes, yes.
Okay, um, so the Board of Assessors, they, they are, are folks who are adamantly opposed to meeting by, via Zoom. They've actually been meeting out next to the handicap ramp at Town Hall, their last two meetings. They need to meet prior to next Tuesday's meeting, November seventeenth, for the classification hearing to vote on recommending the tax rate. And as we talked about one of our prior meetings, the Board of Health and the Fire Chief agreed to hear each request on a case-by-case basis. And based on what some other towns are doing, there was a option to allow the Board of Assessors, which is a Board of Three, to meet in the Town Hall auditorium. And as far as allowing the public, there would be a large note on the front door that would allow the public to come in, up to ten people only in that one room to attend that meeting. It's highly unlikely they're gonna get ten people in that room. But the way some other towns have done it is they've basically propped the door open using like a cone or something. But there is a sign that says, Board of Assessors meeting in the auditorium. Of course, everyone will be social distanced, the mask will be worn, and the room will be sanitized and, and cleaned afterwards. But, and then Kathy Keith will present at the meeting that evening, the Board of Assessors vote. So I, the Board of Health has heard the request and has, is okay with it. Fire Chief, Fire Chief Grenow is also okay with it. And I, my apologies, I thought I had sent it to Lori too, including your packet, but I did not, so I sent it to you this evening. But we just wanted to get a vote from the Board of Selectmen as well on that request.
Alright, do I hear a motion?
Motion, Brian.
Second?
Second.
Alright, any discussion? Yes, Justin?
Just, if, assuming we move forward this, can Lisa just check with Josh McNeil that propping the door open is not gonna trigger any alarms?
Yes, I can. They will probably meet during the day. It's not, it's probably not gonna be a night meeting. They'll meet during the day on November seventeenth. So I'm still waiting for, to get the, the time, but I don't think there'll be any locking mechanism issues, because the Town Hall. Yeah, 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 you're right. Let me check.
Yeah.
That's, yeah.
I, Lisa, I only have one question. You're saying you think ten people would be good. Will there be a member of the, the assessors standing at the door?
We'll, we'll have somebody, like I said, there'll be a more, a note on the door that the only people allowed in are anybody who's gonna attend, attend that meeting. Any of the prior meetings they've had outside, they've literally had two people attend when they had it outside. So it's highly unlikely that people will attend, but we'll make sure that somebody's there, just to make sure that nobody's just wandering around Town Hall.
Okay, alright, alright. That being said, any further questions? Yes, is that a feedback from me or? No, I guess not. Okay, no other questions, Kyle?
No, no questions. Are you asking for a vote?
Yeah, well, we had, we had a motion and a second already.
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Does that exhaust the agenda for open meeting? I believe it does. So I will, I will need a motion to go into executive session. And according to what Governor Baker's March twelve, twenty-twenty, order suspending certain provisions of the opening of the law, section law thirty-eight, twenty, this meeting will be held remotely in an online conference mode hosted by zoom.com and members of the public will not be able to physically attend as this meeting will be held in executive session. No broadcasts of this meeting will be made.
So move, Brian.
A move to go into executive session.
Second, Randy.
Second, okay.
Alright, this mo- alright, this motion is to discuss interim town administrators, OPDIU, and Bush versus Connor Whitman Civil Service Appeal, AP twenty dash one thirty-four, and AFSNB, those are the subjects. So round, alright, man, we've already had a motion and a second.
Yeah, can you just read the exemptions as well?
The exemptions, the exemptions. Move to executive session, according to national law thirty-eight. In accordance with collective bargaining session, contract negotiations with non-union personnel and three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, all litigation where an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating positions of the public body that shares or declares. Are you happy?
Thank you.
Okay, Kyle?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. We're now in executive session.